Six o'clock and I called an order this June fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, council workshop meeting. My voice sounds more impressive now. This is great. Uh, and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. So please rise with me. Is it, is it working now? There we go. Okay, a little bit better. We don't get the reverb. I could have sung a song. Uh, we begin with citizens to be heard. So if there's anybody who would like to be heard on. She's jumping right up at the phone. Go ahead Mitch.
Uh, Mitch Shiles, six twenty-four West Louder Street. I just wanted to speak a little bit on some things that I had been um sort of hearing from residents of the borough. Um, and one thing I've noticed uh frequently when I bring up uh incidents uh sort of involving me on my bicycle or crash statistics, I'm often met with uh anecdotal stories of other people on bikes breaking the law or doing dangerous things on their bikes. And to be fair, uh these observations are not incorrect. These things do happen uh in the borough. Uh, but their mention is often from a biased perspective. And while we would like to see cyclists uh obeying the law and riding safely, uh dangerous acts on a bicycle are not uh they're they're two very different things when they're happening on a bicycle and on a car or in a car. And if we sort of take uh the equation, one half, the times mass times the velocity squared uh to calculate the kinetic energy of a uh or to match the kinetic energy of a three thousand pound sedan going twenty-five miles an hour. A three hundred pound cyclist would need to be traveling at seventy-nine miles per hour. Um, and if we were to change that sedan out for a six thousand pound pickup truck going thirty miles per hour, which is pretty common speed for somebody going driving in a twenty-five mile per hour zone. Uh, a three hundred pound cyclist would need to be traveling at uh a hundred and thirty-four miles per hour. Um, so I I think that is trying to illustrate, you know, that there is a difference between riding a bicycle and driving a car. And that's all I wanted to say. I think Jen wanted to share something.
Okay, thank you Mitch. Is there any, anybody else? Go ahead Jen. Sure.
So in addition, so my name's Jen McDuffie. I live at seven oh two North Pitt. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all. Um, in addition to what Mitch had to say about just how dangerous it is for a cyclist to be so much smaller than a car. And for pedestrians to be smaller than a cyclist and not going as fast. What I have to say is in relation to safer infrastructure. And specifically, the proposal to do traffic calming measures on Bedford and East. And the Bicycle Pedestrian Group, after the many options that were outlined at a Carlisle Alliance Church about a month ago. Um, we sat down and we wrote a petition in favor of three of the options that we thought would really make things safer, would be really practical and not all that expensive. And one was to decrease to one lane because that would make people go slower. Second was to add a parking protected bike lane in one direction. And the third was to add curb extensions at all of the intersections where that's practical. And we took that petition um to various places around town, got a hundred and eleven signatures in favor. Forty-two percent of them are from residents of Bedford and East Street or within a block of where the traffic calming measures are proposed. We got a lot of different comments from people when we were walking around with the petition. The three that we heard most often and actually quite frequently in support is that people really did think taking it down to one lane would make people go slower. Cars couldn't race each other anymore. And several people actually said, well, if it's not going to save them any time, maybe people would stop coming down here when High and Hanover get congested. So, you know, people were actually in favor because of that. They also thought it would make it much safer for the kids. And the third reason was that they were really happy that keeping proposing a parking protected bike lane would keep their parking parallel. I think you guys are well aware of how much people did not like the idea of reverse diagonal parking. So the fact that the parking would stay parallel in order to get a bike lane, they really liked that. Now, there were a couple of negative comments, so to be fair, I'm going to share those too. Um, some people thought the congestion problem would get worse. One person thought the bike lane was unnecessary. And one person was concerned as to whether or not the drainage facilities would stage large enough and positioned correctly that there would not be a problem with stormwater runoff. There were, of course, some additional suggestions. And I'm going to share them with you because I'm just sure you want to know what people were asking for in addition to what we proposed. People would really like the parking spaces outlined in paint. They think it would make people more efficient in the way they parked on their street. People really wanted neighborhood permit parking because so many people that are not a part of that neighborhood park on that street in order to avoid the meters. And in two specific places, people really want crosswalks painted on the street. One location is at High and East and the other is where Bedford and East merged together. And so lastly, um, and I can give this to someone if I just throw a whole bunch of stuff at you all at once. But lastly, I just want to reiterate the one thing that I specifically found very dangerous when I looked at the plans at the church. Um, on Bedford, in between Penn and McBride, the bike lane comes out from behind the parked cars in order to cross the railroad tracks, which it should. But then the person who drew those design plans kept the bike lane out in front of the parked cars for an entire block. And I think that's asking for trouble because drivers are going to get used to the bike lane being behind the parked cars for the entire length. And so that one block is going to be unexpected. And I think somebody's going to get hurt. So I talked to Jeff and it is possible to bring the bike lane out, cross the railroad tracks and tuck it right back in again. And I'd like to see that change. Thank you very much.
Oh, sure. Okay, any, anybody else? Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Linda Horn and I live at forty-two East Street. My backyard is a disaster. I'm here to find out uh how the borough can get involved with the plans that are already in place as far as I understand. Um, in the past five years, I've had my yard majorly flooded. I've had my grass burnt. Um, I've had help from um Carlisle Productions, Harold Brandt, who had brought people in to keep the chain link fence clean from the poison ivy and the growth into my yard. I've in the last couple of months was able to discuss with the builder there. And he is going to talk to the owner of the retention pond that's going to be right along the fence row there. And I have a plan of what they're going to do. But I just want to know who's going to maintain that after their homes are built and sold. And they do what they have proposed on this um plan here, which is put some trees and some shrubs. But there's still going to be an area along that chain link fence that needs to be maintained. I've called the borough already and I'm not sure Jared Wolfstein, I think is his name is.
Jared Wolfstein, he's sitting right over there. He's waving to you.
I never got a phone call back because until we, I I'm assuming that that property has sold. Sold in two different areas, the 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 guy that's building the townhomes and then the guy that has the retention pond area. Um, he was going to speak, he was going to try to get together with them and see if they could possibly put a fence up there, a privacy fence. But I'm at a standstill until that's done, who's going to take care of the poison ivy and so forth that's growing through the chain link fence into not only my yard, but everybody on East Street. So I didn't know if I could get some guidance from somebody on how we, how I handle this.
Yeah, so why don't we, I don't know if you want to do, do Jared, you may have gotten maybe a message. Did you leave a message for Jared?
I did.
You did, okay. So, so maybe, you know, between Borough Manager and Mr. Wolfstein.
I would appreciate if somebody could come and look at it seriously because I'm allergic to poison. I've had two bouts with it already. I don't feel it's my responsibility, you know, to, I mean, I can clean a little bit of my side, but it's a nightmare. It's an absolute nightmare.
Yeah, sure. Um, so why don't we just, just in case he doesn't have your, your contact information before you go, if you could grab the con, give, give your contact information to Mr. Wolfstein.
I left my number on his voicemail.
Okay, well, just, just in case it's, it's lost somewhere, if you would, just um jot, jot it down or pass it along to him.
Steph, Steph is going to bring it.
Steph is helping out.
But I do have another question. I mean, I'm not sure if the borough is responsible for any of what's going on now. I'm a little late, I'm assuming, because the contracts are already set in place as to who's responsible for what on that property. Or does this fall back?
Right, so the borough wouldn't be responsible for, for private property to the extent they're complying with the, the plan. So I, I, I don't know the details of the, your flooding issues and the stormwater um facilities over there right now, but um, we, we could have, we could potentially have a role just in, in ensuring that everything's functioning properly.
Well, they did put a sock in there, but they're not anywhere near putting the retention pond in. I mean, they have, they're, they're building the condos or the townhomes, whatever they are. But the guy that owns that strip of property know where to be found. I mean, I've tried through the planning folks in Harrisburg to get some numbers, but they won't release names or anything to me. But he did do me a favor and sent out some emails, wouldn't tell me who he sent them to. So I'm kind of in the dark here.
Mark, I believe our engineer, Mark, um, did you want to add anything, please?
Well, um, yeah, um, just the clarification, uh, the, the uh stormwater retention pond will be the responsibility of the property owner. And, and the borough has entered into a operation and maintenance agreement with uh the property owner, which specifies the um, the requirements for them to properly maintain it.
Okay.
Um, so we would have enforcement powers if, you know, if, if they fail to do that.
But when does this, what's the date for this? I mean, what?
Well, it's, it's under construction, so it would be, it would be once it's.
So once it's complete, then they will maintain it. Until then?
Well, until then, they're responsible to, to also maintain it from, from the standpoint of uh erosion and sedimentation control. So right now, it's, it's providing a function of, of the uh of capturing any soil that washes off the construction site.
But as far as the shrubbery and the poison ivy growing through the fence, I would love to see a, see a privacy fence put up there to prevent that in the years to come because I, you know, I'm not sure how well will we maintain over the years. I mean, is that something we can, you can discuss with the owner of that tract land there?
I mean, I suppose we can discuss anything. It's not something we, we could require them to install. Um, but, you know, we could have that discussion. I think probably, probably best thing to do is, you know, have, have Jared and or Mark um reach out, reach out to you and then get some more detail because it's going to be easier when they have everything in front of them. They can, they can walk, walk through it with you.
I get that, sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, oh, you're welcome. Is there any, anybody else?
I'll be brief. Uh, I'm Adam Gradel. I live at two fifty Moreland Avenue. Uh, and I'm here because my eighteen-year-old son sent me here because he's working at George's Pizza. But he knows you're discussing bicycle infrastructure and he's in support of it. And I live at two fifty Moreland. I work at one A North Hanover Street. Uh, and I drive because I don't think a strip of paint is enough to keep you safe. Uh, but with more infrastructure, that would could change. Um, one offer I'll give to you, I'm an Episcopal priest, so I serve the church um on the corner there, but I also have a PhD in political science. The last borough I lived in, I helped them do a survey because it's a skill set I don't often get to use. So if you're ever interested in doing that, and I know a couple of the political scientists who work here that would be willing to help, we can do that for free.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Good evening.
Uh, this is on, I guess, the uh calming on Bedford.
And we'll, we'll need your, we'll need your name and address for the, for the minutes.
Oh, not as far. Uh, this is on the traffic calming. Uh, I basically live right in front of where this uh traffic circle will, will go. Uh, one of the main interests that I have is the bicycle lane. If it's going to be in back of the parked cars against the sidewalk. Uh, I ran into that in Oklahoma. And it's kind of confusing and not as safe as one would think. Um, the other thing that I'm having problems with is we need a crosswalk in the area where I live because of schoolchildren who cross right in front of my house. And go across those two one-lane streets while traffic is moving, standing on those two islands that exist right now. It's not a good thing. We've got children playing in the street there also, which I don't know of everyone. They're not using the bike lane that's on the other street either. They're using the sidewalks. That includes adults. Then last week, we almost got hit just trying to put something into a truck and turned around and a guy on an electric bike, riding his child on the back, went right past. When you turned around, he almost hit us instead of, he shouldn't have been on the sidewalk with an electric bike, but he was. So some of this or other problems there. I don't really have a problem with the circle in the future, even though it's right in front of my house. But I do have a problem with some of the other things that have been proposed. Um, I'm concerned about the children in the six hundred block. And I keep stressing that it is the only block that has blind driveways. It has multiple garages. The man down below has a three-car garage before you would ever get to this proposed circle. They are not electric doors. He stops his car with it partially out in the road and has to physically put his door up. I can pull right off. I have a driveway. I have an electronic door. I can get off my street. So if you don't let me park in front of my house, I can still park in front of my street. But the girl next to me has no way to ever park again. She can't park in the alley. It's a deserted alley that we're supposed to take care of. She can't park anywhere there unless she's allowed to put her groceries on the sidewalk and then move her car again. She has no off-street parking like at least three to four of the people in my row. The uh no parking, I believe, from the uh current uh pro, current proposal is saying that up to my driveway is where there will be no parking. Uh, and then after my driveway, there will be parking. So I'm concerned about things I've mentioned and I'm really would like to see the crosswalk that was taken out before I moved into town, put back across Bedford and East for these children to cross and for pedestrians. We have an immense amount of walkers. People that walk dogs, children coming home from school. They seem to come from the school. They have them coming home on the Bedford side, Bedford Street side. And then they go up the street, they come back down and they're crossing over to the apartments which are up on the hill. This is unsafe. These are grade school children. And it's just not safe. I've seen a lot of things happen with those islands. I've seen a car go across it. I've seen a truck drive into it and come off. I've seen a lot since I've been there in my seven and a half years that I've lived in Carlisle. But the one thing I really think, I mean, we need to do is have that crosswalk put back for safety. And to consider that while you're doing this project, that the six hundred block is full of blind driveways that, and places that people pull out onto Bedford Street. And I do realize that the speeding is difficult and I do agree we have to do something with it. Basically because they come off of Hanover Street and they put the pedal to the metal. You've got the wide broad street and just as you get to six sixty on Bedford Street, what you find is a slight curve in the road. And automatically, it's like, oh, whoa, it's only one lane. And there's an island and all of a sudden they've got all this big wide street, but they've already, they're speeding and they're going really fast. We've got motorcycles riding fast. We've got, right now, we have children that are playing in the street that are doing wheelies on one wheel. And they're actually slowing traffic down. And someone's going to have to address these children eventually because they're actually stopping, the cars are starting to slow down. They actually are challenging them. So your traffic calming isn't going to stop kids from playing in the street. It's not going to stop that unless they know they're not supposed to be there. We have parked. Why they're not using it is beyond me, but it's still making unsafe situations beside the fact that people can't cross safely up at that end in the six hundred block. And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Anyone else? Okay, Steph, do we have anybody online? Okay, uh, then move on to meeting minutes. Um, is there a, a motion to approve the May one, twenty twenty-four workshop meeting minutes?
Some.
Motion by Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mellon. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Um, next up, Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the two items this evening, the first is the proposed uh continued discussion or presentation on the proposed traffic calming measures along Bedford Street and East Street. Um, we have somebody from Dogwood here presenting that. Mark, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything first or was, anything's over, so kind of.
Um, and you? The only, the only thing I wanted to mention was that after a presentation at the Council's uh workshop meeting a couple of months ago, uh, there was a presentation at the East Side Neighbors Association and um this will this um will summarize that presentation and also give you a little bit of a, of a summary of some of the comments that were received. I know there were several council folks there, but not everyone. Uh, there was probably close to eighty folks uh at, at that presentation. So some, some very good discussions occurred uh and some good input. Um, and we'll hear that in a minute.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for having me tonight. Um, my name is Danielle Dearoff. I'm the project manager for this and I'm here to present on uh the final concept that we arrived at here. Um, present some of the public feedback we received, some information about project costs uh to just kind of conclude this preliminary design phase of the project. So before I get into my presentation, I just wanted to share very quickly um, a, a very brief overview of what the parking protected concept looks like. Um, when I last presented here, we, we had just shown the reverse angle parking concept. Um, we received a lot of feedback there that um you wanted to see what this uh parking protected bike lane concept would look like. So we put that together and that's what we ultimately, we presented both to um, to the public last month. Um, but I don't think all of you actually got a chance to see it. So um, I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but just wanted to generally show you what it looks like. Um, along each block, there is a, aside from where there might be turn lanes, typically there is going to be one travel lane um that we're going to keep on the narrower side, probably around ten feet. Um, there is regular curb side, parallel parking on one side of the street. Um, and then on the other side of the street, depending on how much space we have, there may be a buffer on one or both sides of the parking. But um you get these basically spaces here of parking. We are intending to or showing them um as being delineated with, with short, I think they're one-foot stripes to mark out each individual parking space. Um, and then there's buffer between, again, depending on space, there's buffer between the parking and the dra, the traffic lane and a buffer between the parking and the bicycle lane, which would be um curb side. And then, um, yeah, as you go through, we, we generally maintain this section throughout. Um, so unlike with the reverse angle parking concept, um, there's generally a little bit more consistency throughout the corridor. Uh, there were a few blocks where we couldn't fit the reverse angle parking, so it kind of switched back and forth. Um, this one keeps it more consistent throughout the corridor. Um, and in terms of amount of parking, it is going to be more or less the same as what's out there today because it's all still parallel parking. Um, and it's generally what the uh, what the community is familiar with. Um, before I flip to the presentation, is there anything specific that anyone wants to see in the concept?
Can, can, there was a comment about the um the crop, the section where the, where the train tracks were.
Yep, so.
Can, can we just kind of discuss that a bit?
Yep. So we have um the parking protected bike lane leading up to the train tracks. Um, generally, a bike lane is supposed to cross train tracks at ninety degrees, which we're showing. And then the reason that we kept it um on the outside of parking and, and I think as Mark said, it is possible to shift it back. Um, it wouldn't be a huge change. The reason we kept it there um is because when we completed phase one of the project, we had designed it both the, the parking protected wasn't something we, we even thought about yet. So we designed this intersection to accommodate either reverse angle parking or a traditional bike lane, which is kind of what we're showing at the, right here. Um, so with this curb extension that was already constructed, the, the bike lane would have to come through this intersection on the outside of the curb extension. That being said, we can certainly transition the bike lane to the curb for the length of the block, transition it around the curb extension coming through this intersection um and then transition it back to the curb on the other side like we're showing. So it's definitely an option. Um, it's just that at, at this intersection, the bike lane is going to need to be outside of that uh, that curb extension.
If, if we were not to make the bike lane more perpendicular to the tracks, which is safe and great, um i- is it a practice to put a sign that basically asks the bicyclist to disembark across the track? If we were to keep it straight or is there, I, I don't know what the precedence is for that?
I don't know enough and it honestly might be a question for the bike community, which they would prefer. Do they, would they rather cross at ninety degrees or are they comfortable just riding across the tracks or just mounting if it goes straight across? Um, the, the, the guidance is that you cross at ninety, but it might not, you know, it might not be that uncomfortable for them to, to just continue across at the, at the angle it's at if we didn't, if we kept it curb side the whole time.
It, it probably depends on whether you're riding a road bike or a hybrid or dirt bike, but um I, 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 I would just say, I think, given the trade-offs, um based on a comment I, I heard and just reflecting, I think keeping the consistency and, and making the slowdown point closer to um up, up the road there at Penn, probably. um, up, up the road there at Penn, probably makes the most sense to me, but, um, that's just my thought.
And I'll frame this too by saying, you know, we're, we're here tonight to kind of present the concept that we presented last month, the feedback we got on it. Um, anything that's presented here can be changed during final design. None of it is set in stone until you decide to move forward with the project, so. With that, just pull my presentation up. So as Mark said, we presented to, uh, the public on April tenth at the East Side Neighbors Meeting. Um, I think we, we probably had somewhere sixty to eighty attendees there. Um, we received thirty-nine people, uh, who signed in on the sign-in sheets. We received seventeen written feedback forms. Um, some of these came in at the meeting itself and others were either emailed or dropped off physically to the office after the meeting, so we, we gave it a few weeks after the meeting and a couple of comment forms still trickled in. Um, to summarize some of the verbal feedback that we took notes on during the meeting, um, we heard a lot of feedback about the reverse angle parking, uh, that it would be difficult. Um, it has increased exposure to bicyclists, um, with kind of backing through the bike lane. We heard a lot of great feedback that parking protected bike lanes are safer for bicyclists, more consistent throughout the corridors. Um, one comment that we did receive a number of times was that the, uh, the bike lanes would not be plowed in the winter. Um, currently, I think the, the winter maintenance, um, it plows the traffic lane, it does not plow the parking lanes, so putting the bike lane on the outside there, it would not be plowed either. Um, and, and the parking lane still would not be plowed, so, um, that wouldn't be a big difference. However, um, I think one of the comments we received was that the property owners then, who are getting in their cars, have to, would have, if they shovel the sidewalk, they still would have to walk through the snow in the bike lane to get into their car, unless they also shovel a piece of the bike lane, so. Um, the general consensus that we heard when talking about traffic calming was the more the merrier. Uh, it seemed like just about everyone at the meeting was in favor of the traffic calming measures, anything that would help slow drivers down. Um, we did get, uh, to, to speak to negative feedback. There wasn't a ton of it, but, um, there were certainly some attendees there that didn't feel as though bike lanes were needed at all in the corridor, whether it was that there aren't many bicyclists or that they won't use the bike lanes. Um, there was some feedback that they're just not needed. Um, we do show some bike boxes on our designs at the intersections to allow for left turns. Um, it's standard practice, I think, when you have a bike box to restrict right turn on red because it could create conflict between the bicyclists that are proceeding into the bike box and a car that's turning on a, on a red light. Um, and there was some definite concern over, you know, uh, increased delay for vehicles if they can't turn right. Um, definite speeding was cited very frequently. It, it seems like there's definitely a, a speeding concern on the corridor. Um, a, a number of attendees cited, um, concerns over car show traffic. Um, thinking that the reduction to one lane and the traffic calming, um, would not help that situation. And then, um, not super related to our project, but just a, a comment that we received was a request for more speed enforcement on the corridor. So, to summarize a little bit of what we got on the actual comment forms that we received, um, I mentioned we received seventeen feedback forms. The first question on there was preference for the reverse angle parking versus the parking protected bike lane. Um, twelve of the seventeen forms were in favor of the parking protected bike lane. Four did not respond to that question, and there was one that was in favor of the reverse angle. Um, I think we've talked a lot about the pros and cons of, of the two options, so I won't reiterate those too much. Um, but generally, parking protected is definitely favored by bicyclists. Um, and a lot of, certainly a lot of comments about safety for, um, children on their bicycles as well. In terms of traffic calming measures, um, we presented curb extensions, chicanes, which were the, um, they're in that lower right-hand picture, the little kind of thick, make like an S curve on the road. Um, speed humps and raised intersections. Um, in general, I think it, the, where we have percentages of support, it was, um, sixty-five percent of the, of the forms that we got said they liked curb extensions. Eighteen percent liked the chicanes, fifty-three liked the speed humps and forty-one liked the raised intersection. Um, that's just whether they mentioned that they were in favor of it. Um, but in general, there was very, very minimal feedback on the forms saying, I really don't like chicanes or I really don't like speed humps. Um, there were certainly one or two comments here and there about a specific measure, but most of, as I said earlier, most of the comments were the more the merrier. We like traffic calming, throw it all out there. Um, the intersection configuration at Bedford and East, we presented both a traditional and kind of what's out there already concept, as well as the mini roundabout concept. Um, and we were a little bit surprised, but we hardly received any, um, any feedback that was against the mini roundabout. Um, the, just on the forums, it was, uh, fourteen of the seventeen were all in favor of the roundabout. Um, including a few, uh, from property owners who live right at that intersection, saying that they're in favor of it. Um, there were two of the seventeen that like the current configuration. Um, and one that didn't, uh, didn't respond to that intersection. Couple select quotes from the, uh, from the forums, uh, mini roundabout all the way, curb extensions at all crosswalk areas on both streets. Um, that was just something common that we saw a lot was, there were a bunch of comments saying put curb extensions everywhere. Um, protected bike lanes are must, yes to all, drivers speed everywhere, the more obstacles, the better. Um, all the traffic calming devices and parking protected is a must, so. We did ask for some feedback about, um, specific locations where speeding is a concern or where they would like to see traffic calming. Um, not everyone answered this, but there were certainly, it seemed like there were certainly some common themes. Um, a lot of feedback about East Street, north of North Street, East Street around the railroad tracks, East Street at Louther. Um, there were a couple cited locations on Bedford Street. Um, but again, not, not everyone responded to this question. These were just some of the, um, some of the locations that were mentioned. So we did take a look then at, um, approximate construction costs. Um, when we took a look at this, we tried to come up with kind of an average cost for each of the traffic calming improvements. Um, they're gonna vary a lot by intersection and location. It depends, you know, each curb extension depends on if there's parking on both streets or only one, um, how wide the street is. So we kind of took a look at a few different scenarios and created an average. Um, so these are definitely approximate construction costs, but they give a good sense. Um, looking high level, we, we started by kind of breaking it down into pieces. So one thing we looked at was, alright, let's say we start by just going out there and striping this project. We, we don't look at any traffic calming at first. We're gonna go out and put all the striping down to put the bike lane in, um, bump out the parking. And this number that I have up on the screen does not include any of those diagonal gore stripes either. Um, those are two foot wide stripes, they're thermoplastic paint. They, and there's a lot of them on the plans, so those really bumped the price up. Um, so I just kind of wanted to show what the price looks like with and without those. Um, so to put the bike lane down with no gore striping at all, um, you're looking at approximately thirty-five thousand per corridor, uh, seventy thousand total to do both streets. Um, as, is kind of shown in that picture there. To add in the gore markings, it bumps it up to about a hundred seventy-five thousand, so you're looking at about a hundred five thousand dollars in all those diagonal stripes. Um, again, it's, it's just a lot of paint. And then the, uh, to add in the green pavement markings as well. And just to note, that's only what's shown on the plan. That would not be painting the entire bike lane green. It's just for the bike boxes and the little like skip marks in the intersection. Um, that bumps the striping up to two hundred thousand. So to do all of the pavement marking that's shown on the plan, you're looking at about two hundred thousand. Another thing we took a look at was, um, temporary, uh, temporary or some sort of physical barrier between the parking and the bike lane. Um, what we looked at was similar to this, it would just be kind of a, a little white section of curb with a couple, um, delineator posts on it. And to put those in on both corridors is probably around thirty thousand. And then looking at traffic calming, um, per, so for the curb extensions, per corner, we're estimating around thirteen thousand five hundred. Um, if you wanted to do a lower cost option there, other than putting in, um, concrete, physical curb extensions, there's, um, there's always the option to do line paint and flexible delineator posts. Um, I think in, in Boiling Springs, maybe last month, they just put in some, uh, painted and stamped asphalt curb extensions, so they didn't build anything up from the ground. Um, but they provided that visual separation. So something like that would be much less, around eight hundred fifty per corner. Um, the chicanes are about sixteen thousand per set of three. Uh, again, if you want to just kind of paint those, it's about two thousand per set of three. Speed humps, about forty-five hundred each. Um, the raised intersection that we're showing on the plans were estimating around a hundred fifty thousand. And then the mini roundabout, um, around a hundred ninety-five thousand. And again, that's just purely kind of construction cost, doesn't take into account utility relocation, potential right-of-way impacts, um, other associated costs. We're looking at just the, the physical improvement. So to kind of bring this all together, um, aside from some commentary that we don't need bike lanes at all, um, pretty much all the feedback we got was in favor of the parking protected layout. Traffic calming, there is just generally a lot of support for it, the more the merrier. Um, most feedback we received was supportive of the mini roundabout. Um, so I'm showing kind of that menu of options there, which is the base striping, the base striping with the gore, all of the striping together and then those individual costs. Um, if you were to try to look at what's it gonna cost to put this entire concept on the ground right now as it's shown, um, that's what you're seeing on the left side of the slide there. That does include all the striping, the bike lane separator, si- we included seventy-three curb extensions in that, which is just about everywhere that you could possibly put them. Um, two sets of chicanes, we assumed six speed humps, one raised intersection and mini roundabout, um, and that's that total of about one point six million. So mov- moving forward, um, we're certainly looking forward to providing final design services for this in the future. I know we've discussed, um, certainly coordination with other projects going on in the borough. Obviously, looking at funding is, is gonna be very important here. Um, there are probably opportunities to phase it, whether you look at striping first or trying to put everything on the ground at once. Um, based on the feedback we received, we certainly have some locations in mind for certain traffic calming measures. Whether it's, you know, let's put the raised intersection at east and north where everyone said there's an issue. Um, but certainly, we didn't receive enough feedback on specific locations to be able to decide where everything would need to go, so, um, if this moves forward, we'll definitely be seeking direction from the council um, and Public Works regarding what the project budget is, what you want to include, um, and final locations for all the improvements. Thank you.
Mitch, I know you had your hand up a long time ago. Did, is it still?
We both have something to say. You go first.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Um, I guess just regarding the, the railroad crossing, um, I, so I, I lived in, uh, Boston and biked on Comm Ave a lot, um, which is littered with streetcar rails, um, and, um, it's not always like essential to like cross tracks at a perfect ninety-degree angle, um, as long as it's not like an acute crossing. You're not gonna get your wheel stuck in it, uh, and I ride with not the thinnest tires, but pretty thin tires. The other thing I would say is, um, I think you do wanna be careful about, like, slowing people down at the railroad crossing because when you do slow down, um, you know, you tend to like wobble your wheel a lot to stay balanced and if, that, that's usually like when you get your tire locked in the tracks, so, uh, it's just something to kind of consider, um, if I have a gen- wanted to.
So a lot of you don't know me, but I spent twenty-four years going everywhere on a bicycle. And I agree with Mitch that you don't have to be at a perfect ninety-degree angle to cross a railroad. Um, however, if it were really important that you follow the ideal recommendations of a bicycle should go over a railroad track perpendicular, which as I said, I don't agree with, but if green paint were put down in those intersections to show the cyclist where specifically you wanted them to ride. If it's a parking protected bike lane, you don't need any green paint, so you're just talking about green paint at those intersections to guide the cyclist, and so the cyclist would be able to see where they were supposed to go. I think you could go either way, but in my book, people want people to do what is expected. And you have a crash when people do something unexpected. And that's why I want the bike lane consistent and straight as often as possible.
Um, may I ask a question? Uh, so part of that is, um, I'm really interested in like desire paths, which are created whenever people, um, want to go somewhere and disregard a sidewalk that would naturally lead them, um, to where they are to go. Uh, you often see like little paths and like flower beds where people have walked through them continuously over and over again. That's a desire path. So my sort of comment here is, what is the desired path for the bicyclists in this instance? It is one thing to want them to cross at a specific angle and move from one side of this, the, um, the street to the other to like not get stuck in the train tracks. But what is the most common user experience of somebody on a bike who is approaching a railroad crossing and crossing it? And that's, it should be a common sense solution. Um, and I hope that we can resolve that with something that speaks to the common sense of a bicyclist.
I think it certainly begs the question, if we bump it out, cross at ninety and bump it back in, are the bicyclists gonna stay, stay in that path or are they just gonna continue straight?
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
I'm Hal Coons from, uh, North, seven oh two North Pitt. Um, my thought on that particular issue is for experienced cyclists crossing at, at oblique angles is fine. We, you know, we know how to do that. Um, my intent, my thought would be to paint that green stripe with the curb out because kids on bicycles who don't have the experience are gonna be a lot safer crossing at ninety degrees. And the experienced cyclists, they could keep going straight and just go off the green, the gr- the painted green stripe at that point. But I would, I would like the sys- the, the, the infrastructure to encourage the bikes to cross at ninety degrees because it is a lot safer for kids to do that. And that would, that would give you a desired path, which is, that's a, that's a real issue. Um, but it would also give the kids a visual clue to something that's safer.
Any other questions or comments from Council?
I don't have a question, but I will say, um, I, I think it is very important that we're doing, we're taking the traffic calming measures. Um, I have noticed because somehow I ended up spending a lot of time on the road back and forth to Harrisburg, Lancaster, wherever, but there is a lot more traffic, um, coming in and out of Carlisle. Um, between Harrisburg, especially. Um, between Harrisburg especially, um, the eighty-one is bringing a lot of people in and so then. During car show traffic, like it looks like today, look like is this car show traffic that's coming in? It's not, but what's happening is, um, the car show people now also know the little side streets and things that we used to take. To, for us to get home, they understand where those places are as well. And I think, you know, they know now how to get to, uh, if they wanna go to a particular restaurant. And it's quicker for them to go from, you know, to through Bedford Street or whatever, they're understanding that now and so. It is really creating, um, uh, more. More, more issues for cyclists, for pedestrians. And, you know, trying to figure out how we even talk to our cyclists. To our motorists about how we're driving and how we are around each other because I will say. Uh, I'm seeing more and more, and it's usually from younger, younger people who are not necessarily experienced on the bikes. But they're playing games on the bikes now, so you know, they're popping wheelies. Where they're darting in and out, and so it is we as motorists have to be more patient. Um, when we see this, uh, it's not easy to be patient when you see it, it is frustrating. But, um, I think looking at the presentation and the conversations that we've had, um, I think that. Uh, what you put together is good, I realize there's some things maybe we need to tweak, but. Um, this is an important project that absolutely needs to happen. And possibly at some point in some other areas in Carlisle as well because traffic has become, has increased here.
My only comment is that, um, it's refreshing to see uh how all the people have come to these meetings. And even when they don't always see eye to eye, like it's been very respectful and caring and like. Seeing each other as humans and having different perspectives and understanding where they live or why they care so passionately about one side or the other. Um, because sometimes things get very heated and um and stressed, and I think that this has been. Uh, a, you know, a long process, um, but it's been very helpful and also. Uh, I appreciate you being able to go back to the drawing board and, you know, take all of our many comments. And and revamp things, um, but again, always looking at the community and, uh, um, just to try to make the most successful thing. So I appreciate all these signatures and I appreciate everyone sort of trying to, um, come to the meetings and having those conversations that can sometimes be tough. But I I see it and it's a, it's good work, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sorry, but your point about uh desired pass was a very good one, actually, um, Owen Parker, North Hannover Street. On North Hannover Street, we have like about seven hundred yards worth of sidewalk that has no marked crossing. Um, and on the intersection of Penn and North Hannover Street. There's a sign that says pedestrian crossing, but uh everything's erased and. I I really think it's mostly used to just have a good turn and acceleration for most motorists, which is. Distressing because I've had the experience of beginning to cross and seeing something, someone in a car. Looking at me as they drive right by, which isn't great because someone is eventually gonna be killed by it or injured. Um, and I understand that later on, we are going to have some kind of traffic calming measure installed there. Which is great, I am totally for that, I I would love that, but in the meantime. We really, can we just like stick some lines down and have a crossing in between and maybe a really big sign saying, don't run over people? Or stop, or stop, either one.
Yeah, that, that, that project's happening right, right now, I mean, when you, when you look at Hannover Street and the, the, what's going on there, that's. That the pro- project's in process.
Great, when is expected to be in place?
It's a eight, what is it, eighteen year, eighteen year, eighteen month? It may feel like eighteen years, eighteen, eighteen months. It'll feel like eighteen years of complaints about, about the congestion through there, but.
Is there no possibility of putting something, just the, just the lines down in the current pedestrian?
Right, and and you're, you're talking about Penn, Penn Street across, across Hannover. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to remember, it's never, it's never good there, I know we're not. I'd say, I, I live on the north side of town, so when I come walk downtown, I, I know what it's like trying to get that, you should try. Crossing Spring, Spring Road up along the Leonard Streets where there are crosswalks, it's, it's pretty challenging too.
Yeah.
But I don't know what we can do on a, you know, sort of a quick basis given what's going through there right now.
Yeah, I mean, we, we put thermoplastic there last year, it already wore away.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, i- i- it's gonna go quick. Um, especially because with the construction vehicles are stopping and starting and that. Uh, leads to a lot more, um, um, erosion of, of markings. Uh, you know, we, i- i- if council would like markings put up, we certainly can do that, but you have to recognize that they're gonna be temporary.
How, how much does that ballpark cost for just one intersection like that? I know, I was, I was going back to the numbers, I was trying to figure out if I could break it down.
I- i- it's, it's probably.
Eight, eight.
That, that's.
Eight seventeen per linear.
Yeah.
I, I think that the, like, the two foot markings are like two dollars a linear foot.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I wouldn't hurt to drop it, that's not much, right?
I, I, yeah, I, I, Owen, uh, I could not, if the five would be more, obviously, we're neighbors and. Um, we both cross the street a lot to go to probably all the same restaurants. Um, occasionally, I have seen, uh, patrol cars, their chens, you know, looking at things and. To the degree we're gonna have a vulnerability, uh, that continue, you know, is, is, I would ask chief to, to just maybe. Step up the monitoring at that area and make, make sure that people are watching pedestrians. Actually, it's been my experience that more people are using it, uh, maybe being graver. Wh- which, um, i- is a good sign to me because I think the north side of town is, is becoming. More interested in, in, in walking, but, um, really in this construction period, I think chief, the more we can maybe. Get a patrol car there a little bit more often at that particular point, um, that would, that would be great, um, but I, I hear you Owen, thanks.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
I had one other request on the list here, um, we had basic striping gore, micro and green paint, but we didn't have basic striping. And just green paint on that list, um, the only reason I say that is someone might be able to talk me into having bike lanes. Separators and Lua gore markings, um, do the trick, so maybe if you could squeeze that option in there. Um, I'm Susan Oze, uh, I'm a huge fan of green paint, um, I mean. Obviously, the most important places are at the intersections and that's great. Uh, I think having, you know, a handsome bike, bicycle outline, maybe. A couple times each block is really an attractive feature for somebody who, um, may not notice. Frankly, like, why is there all this space here, so, um, I would, I would love to maybe explore. Maybe not totally making the bicycle lane gre- green, but, but having a little bit more, maybe a decal and print.
The, um, the bike symbols and arrows that are shown on the concept are included in this base striping cost?
But are they green?
No, they're, they would just be the, um. The, these symbols here, yeah, tho- those are included in the base price.
Okay.
All of the green paint that's shown, I guess, based on what we have here is probably twenty-five thousand. For the, for just the green, it'd be the, the difference between the one seventy-five and two hundred.
Okay, so reasonable, but if you, if you could just maybe add base striping and green paint.
Yep.
Uh, onto that, that'd be useful, thanks.
Dan- Danielle, could you jump back to that?
Yes.
The area where we, we don't have parking protected along, along there.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure, the last thing was gonna be, uh, we probably need a concept for how, um. We would deal with that intersection pen in Bedford if we were to, I mean. We haven't decided, we have a little bit of difference of opinion, what's better, but if, if we wanted to keep, keep it. Parking protected, wh- what would we need to do at Bedford and Penn to get, get them back on, on track?
The biggest thing would probably just be losing a couple parking spaces here, we would, you know, we, we bump out to cross at ninety. And we would need a, another one or two parking spaces to bump back in. And then it would, it would be curbside and then somewhere closer to the intersection, it would just bump back out.
Okay.
Just to cross. Um, the other thing just to note about this block, um, it, either way, whether it's parking protected or. Um, as shown on the screen, this block in particular is one of the narrowest on the corridor. So unfortunately, there's no buffer on either side, so e- even if we, um, reverse them. You would still, you would have a six foot bike lane immediately adjacent to the seven and a half foot parking. Immediately adjacent to the ten foot travel lane, just because of the available space on this block. I think this is the only block where there's no, no buffer at all.
Has there been any, uh, just, uh, the pricing you have for speed humps and raised intersections are. Still each on your summary page, are, are there. A- any proposed number that. We, uh, shared with the public or that have been discussed internally in, in terms of. What the right number of those might be?
There's not, uh, we haven't been a part of any discussions, um, based on the feedback we got, we were thinking internally. Um, I had mentioned, we're, we're showing it at east and louder based on the feedback. Um, it seemed like east and north might be a good idea. Um, we were thinking if you wanted a raised intersection on each corridor, maybe you would do like east and north and Bedford and louder. Um, but. Raised intersections are expensive, that, they would definitely, you'd wanna place them strategically based on where they're really needed. Speed humps are much less expensive, um, and oftentimes you find. A few of them on a corridor, um, so in the, in the total estimate, we had assumed six, we were thinking, you know, maybe you put three on each corridor. Just so people come to expect that they're going to encounter speed humps and they don't gather too much speed. Um, but again, exact locations and exact number, haven't had many discussions about it. And all of this, it's, it's very easy to determine in final design, you know, we, we sit down, we figure out where, where we want them and. Add them to the plans.
Okay, thanks, I, I apologize, you, you did have your some, you, you had notionally said one, in that quarter, one. Raised intersection.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Um, may I ask a question about the speed humps? Um, do they extend the entire width of the street so that they are also in? The bike lane and people have to park over them or like, how wide are they relative to? And when what's their sort of interaction with the parking and then the bike lane?
Typically, we propose them across the entire street, um, the way these are designed, they're not like the ones in a parking lot. Where they're like, these are really aggressive humps, they're, um, they're really more designed, like, they call them speed tables. So it's much more gradual, um, and then it has a little bit of, a little bit of a flat top and goes back down. Um, and I, I've certainly seen in cities where there, where parking goes straight across and people park on there. It's not an aggressive slope, um, alternatively, you could break the parking just at where the speed humps are. Um, and two, we, we have designed them across the bike lanes. Um, you can certainly, drainage would certainly have to be considered, um, depending on drainage flows, we may need to stop them. Short of the curb line to make sure we're maintaining flow, um. They're, it, it, they can kind of be designed either way, but the typical would be to just bring the full width of the road.
And my last comment is more of just the practical process going forward is, uh, you know, you gave, um, some. Very helpful costs on just like paint, and I do like getting things done sort of swiftly in a pilot project. In a phase project to, uh, low, lower cost, but also being able to give that functionality, so, um. I wouldn't wanna wait, I mean, we, right now, we're working on eighteen months of a, of the roundabout, right, I know how long it's taken us to get there, so we've worked really well on this. And we are excited to see it come through, so I'm, um, I'm in the, uh, support of. You know, smart interventions that we can start seeing coming those things if possible, um, in the, you know, less than ten year time span.
And just for your information, another conversation that we've had, it, it's definitely important to consider if and when. Um, these streets will be paved in the future because you don't wanna spend all this money on striping. And then repave the streets and spend all the money on striping again. Um, but the other thing that comes with repaving the streets, which we've talked about a lot, is. When you repave these streets now, you have to rebuild ADA ramps. And there are a lot of ADA ramps along this corridor, so that's kind of why we looked at the striping this way was. You know, you're, if you just really wanna get out there and put some striping on the ground and you try to go with this bare minimum just to get it out there. Then maybe you're just looking at a seventy thousand dollar project to kick you off in the meantime. You would have, you would end up probably just eradicating the existing striping, which isn't always the cleanest and best look. But, you know, it gets something out there and then depending on when paving is scheduled and things like that and your funding. You look at putting more out there, so.
So, some of the com- components of these could be separated out too, like the, the mini roundabout, obviously, we could, we could choose.
Yep.
Not, not to do that or delay that, I, I assume the raised intersections, if we're kind of looking at grant funding and the grant funding doesn't come through. We, we, we pretty easily drop that.
Yep, most of these elements, other than, I mean, you'd probably wanna strike the whole corridor at once. But otherwise, most of the elements can be added, subtracted, constructed at different times, you know, you could go out. Like, speed humps are very easy, very quick to construct, they're not crazy expensive. You could decide to go throw a few speed humps out there before doing anything else if you just wanted to see how that works. Um, so yeah, most of these options are, are pretty easy to kind of pick and choose, um, if all the funding doesn't come at once, but.
I could assume that, um, there is, do we have the capability sort of mo- modeling, I mean, putting a speed hump or a raised crosswalk. Ideally is to serve a purpose, you know, uh, to keep traffic maybe below a certain average speed, I would guess. Um, I'm not sure if Jeff or anybody's sort of preliminary modeled. How many would on average keep speeds below this amount, um, if that, is that a capability? We, we would have to, to say, you know, e- either that could be based on comparable research or some modeling that says. On average, if you have this number of either raised intersections or speed humps, you could expect the average speed to stay below. So, is that something they might be able to do?
There's some data out there about, um, how like, how much each of these traffic calming measures typically lower speeds. Um, it's hard to say how drivers will react and act between measures. Um, which is why I said like speed humps typically you want a few of them so that they're not flooring it between them. They know that there's gonna be another, um, or there's often like signage for speed humps ahead so that they know there will be a few. Um, so there's information out there about how much speed reduction you get with each traffic calming measure, I think speed humps are the most. And I wanna say, might have been like eight to ten miles an hour reduction to, to go over them. But you will get people who speed right back up after, so it, it's hard to say and I don't know that we can really. Project what we'd expect with, you know, if we put three of them out there, are they gonna maintain speeds, it's hard to say.
I just had a question from Mark, you don't happen to know when Bedford and East are next slated for, for paving, do you? If you don't, that's fine.
Um, yeah, I, I believe, uh, within the next five years.
See, I was holding off on that because I didn't wanna put you on the spot, but I should have known, you would have known that. Um, any, anything else?
I, I just wanna say, um. Take two steps back here and, um, you know, for those who are wa- thinking this, this is sort of a. bespoke, sort of out of the ordinary project, I, I would challenge you to, just remind folks that what, what we're doing here. Is we're sort of taking multimodal transportation into our own hands here in the borough, okay, we have our two main corridors. Our own by the state, they're very important corridors, um.
I think Susan and staff would, would agree that getting the responsiveness we need from the state to do what we're doing on multimodal isn't consistent with our goals. It's just, that's a fact of life and um, this, at least, this solves a real big issue on the north side of town. I hope to expand that. At one point six million dollars, in my mind, it is, um, an absolute drop in the bucket of what value this will provide the borough. I, I, I'm certain of that. Um, and so I, um, but, but I, I did want folks to understand that, um, this is a, a concerted effort by the borough to um, to sort of the next best solution to using our main, other than using our main corridors, main and Hanover. Which I hope we can still provide some safe bicycle and pedestrian traffic, but really provide a major safe um, option, um, in, in what I would say was our most developing areas of town and connecting places. So, um, I'm all for, I think this price is extremely reasonable for the benefits it will provide the community. Thanks.
And so I don't know if I'm jumping the gun here, but I guess like, what are next steps from this in terms of considering final design? I guess like information that is, or input that's needed from us on council still to do that. Cause I, I also recall at the meeting, there was discussion about the, you, you know, a now underway project that um, penned in Hanover for construction of the roundabout and obviously taking that into consideration as we're looking at this. I'm just kind of curious as to timeline wise, where we go from here, basically.
Who wants to take that?
Well, I, so, um, I, I would say that, um, as we get into the budget process, um, this, it would be good to incorporate, uh, council's, um, desires or goals, uh, in that for, for twenty twenty-five. Um, and then, um, get feedback from, uh, from the engineer regarding the costs for various, um, for the next phase. And also incorporate that into, into the budget process.
And now I'll just close up to echoing somewhat what Council Hicks said that, um, one of my first, um, I guess rescue calls, um, back in, would've been like twenty thirteen was on East Street. It was actually, I was headed to vehicle rescue training at Hack. Um, and Josh Kirby and I hopped in the utility on our way there and um, a, a little boy about four years old, it was the, sort of the typical ball goes into the street and he ran, ran after it. Um, was hit by, by a vehicle. Luckily, he sur- survived that, but he was, he was rushed off to the hospital. So very aware that, you know, there are people and children and pedestrians and cyclists throughout these, these corridors and, and that one point six million dollars isn't, isn't much if it, if it, you know, saves someone's life, you know, life of a little boy like that or, or, or an adult, you know, who, who are just as valuable in this world as the, as the four year olds. So, uh, so thank you Danielle, appreciate the presentation tonight.
So now, next we have a presentation on a potential closure of Market House Avenue, um, from Cumberland County. Um, I don't know if Mark, you wanted to say anything or just kind of turn, just turn things over there. Thanks.
Good evening, council members. Uh, I'm Kirk Stone. I'm the director of planning for Cumberland County. With us tonight, Brett Durham, who's also our facilities director, uh, for Cumberland County. Uh, we wanna get your input on potential vacation of Market House Avenue. So, I believe it was late last year, oh, we had some concerns in the county of, of the safety of our, of our elected and appointed officials that park on Market House Avenue. As you're aware, that's a unrestricted free flow for pedestrians as well as cars, uh, flying, uh, through there. Uh, we were tasked by the chief clerk to look at different alternatives for, uh, improving the, the safety of our elected and appointed officials in that area. We had meetings with your staff, uh, we met with Mark and Jeff on several occasions to look at different issues surrounding the vacation that we may run into that would be of concern to the borough. I, I believe staff provided you with an analysis of, of all the issues. I won't go through this step by step, but I'll summarize, uh, the main points of, of the memo. Uh, we did traffic and pedestrian counts, uh, traffic counts for about a hundred and fifty vehicles per day. Appeared to be similar to other alleys and other, uh, streets of similar function in, in the borough and the surrounding area. The county did pedestrian counts. We looked at about a hundred to two hundred pedestrians, uh, per day. We, we didn't break those down into any sort of hourly segments. It was just a twenty-four hour, uh, count. County employees likely comprise a high segment of that, right? So you, you see that they're probably the primary users of that, especially during the, the eight to four thirty, uh, timeframe. And, and with that, looking at is there, is there a detour? You know, you do highway projects, you always have a detour and see how long that is. In this case, you go pedestrian detour to get to the other side, it's about four hundred feet. So, uh, look at that, not unreasonable in, in urban environment if, if the, the street were to be vacated. Uh, we also found presence of utilities. So there's borough sewer water lines, uh, that are under Market House Avenue. We're also aware of streetlights there that may have to be transferred to county for long-term ownership. So not looking at these as, as fatal flaws that would really challenge the ability to vacate the street. But things that we need to be aware of, details that we need to be aware of that can be worked out, uh, i- if council were in favor of a vacation. We also looked at emergency access, uh, so we recognize that fire and EMS will still require access to, uh, Market House Avenue. Uh, there's an existing Knox box that we have, uh, there now that could be re- relocated. Uh, and we could also look at potential features of, of the closure, uh, if we close it to, to vehicles and pedestrians. That would allow rapid access and bypass with emergency vehicles. So Brett passed some initial designs on that, uh, looks at sirens, other, other things that could activate uh, the, a gate if it were there to be open. So the options that, that we really looked at were, one was just restrict vehicle access only. So we'd have gates, some sort of restriction there to, to keep the vehicles from free flowing through there. It would still be free flow of pedestrians. So while that provides some sort of, of protection for vehicles, still you'd have free flow of, of anyone that walk, wants to walk through there. So level of public safety for that and protection really isn't heightened that much. Uh, the second issue or option that we looked at was restricting vehicle and pedestrian access through there. So basically a closure of the road and then restricted access to the sidewalk just to those that need to get to county facilities, uh, for county business. Uh, looking at, I believe our preference would be for the restriction on the vehicle and pedestrian access. Uh, if the purpose of doing this is public safety, I think that gives us the greatest degree of public safety for our elected and appointed officials that are parking there. So, uh, you know, your, your packet that we gave, it gives a lot of details, some, some of the traffic counts, uh, some maps there showing the, the uh, location of the utilities, uh, for your information. Uh, our intent was really to discuss this with Borough Council tonight, get your input before we take any further steps moving forward. Uh, county solicitors talked to some, some other council to help look at what would be required of vacation. Uh, there's obviously some coordination that has to happen with Borough Council, but before we move ahead, we wanted to, to talk with council, get any issues or concerns that you may have. So we consider that in our next steps.
After we just talked about pedestrian safety all that time, right? Uh, is there any, any comments or input from, from Council, uh, Council Hicks?
Uh, I've thought about this all of about eighteen seconds, but, um, it, it does lead me to think that have staff maybe look at this as a, an opportunity. We, at least in one, maybe two of the past, um, planning goals, we, we've looked at trying to open up a, an alley or somewhere near downtown to more of a public, eliminate uh, cars and have maybe a public square, sort of once a week sort of thing. Um, there, there've been impediments to other areas, uh, for a number of reasons. People live there, what have you. There've been challenges. Um, given the rather, um, predictable usage for public officials, it seems like this could be an opportunity to be a location where we could make it an attractive area for our local businesses to basically have a sort of street blocked off from cars where people could basically hang out, families could hang out in, in, in a downtown area that would be less of a conflict than some of our other alleyways. Just, just a thought.
Um, I have two questions. Um, one, I am a little, I'm gonna need some more persuading in order to prevent pedestrians from using this avenue. Uh, again, desired paths. I know that the option is to go to the corner and then turn right, um, and to not use that avenue. Um, but logically speaking, some folks who are used to moving in that area are not going to do that. How would you, I, so my two questions are, one, were there any instances that made you concerned about this avenue? Um, were people feeling unsafe there? Um, and two, how do you propose keeping pedestrians that aren't working in this area or elected officials out? Um, are there going to be like a badge scanner or, like, you just know who people are visually? Um, I'm just concerned about how you can tell like who's allowed to use the space and like who isn't allowed to use the space as a pedestrian.
Sure. Let's answer the, the first part of the question too. So, uh, we haven't had any direct threats. Uh, but I, I think this is a proactive measure to make sure that doesn't happen. I don't need to go into detail who parks there. I don't need to go into detail of th- their activities on a daily basis of them dealing with the criminal justice system. So I, I think it's pretty obvious that those folks, right now, there's no protection whatsoever on a daily basis. If someone has a problem with them or a problem with one of their rulings, it's right there. We're trying to prevent that. We're trying to protect them, uh, into the future. Cause it's one thing now, as, as we've said internally, this issue's been identified. Uh, if and when something happens, those of us that knew about it are really gonna have a lot of explaining to do and we wanna avoid that explain. Uh, in terms of how we close off the, the, the actual road, so the road, we'd have a, a gate and then, uh, Brent, I know you've been looking into a few, uh, card swipe type issues where, you know, county staff and others could, could swipe and, and go in and be, um, go through the, uh, security. Joel, going back to what you said earlier too, when we look at, could we open this up outside of hours? Sure. I think that's something that we had talked about staff doing after hours if folks need to, to get through there. There's, there's no public safety issues that we could work for the borough and exploring how we do that. Brent, I don't know if you have any, you wanna give any more details on, uh, how that would be set up to allow pedestrians to go through or any of the initial looks you've had?
So, um, I had jury duty last, well, in the spring, um, and that's where I entered. And there were a large number of people coming in that day. So are you gonna sort of rework that logistically? So your jurors are coming in another entrance? Or we're on jury weeks, would they still come in that way? Like, how would that work?
And there would be a gate on the other side as well. There'd be two gates. So on east side and where it intersects with Liberty Avenue? So you would have to badge in and badge out? And what about if you're in your car? How would you open that gate? Going in and going out? Right, exiting. But like, if you're, if you're entering, it's gonna be like a garage door, you know, where like, I have a little badge in my car? So you're going to like install something sort of like at the sidewalk where someone can badge in from their window, their car door window?
Um, so I, I'm with Joel is in the idea of liking, um, closing down a, um, one of these small alleys, we've talked about it. Uh, but I actually don't agree with the idea that it would really be useful in the, in the capacity of how you're, you're, you know, it's being proposed with the gates because I, I think people will have this shall not pass idea and not really, you know, I, um, there, I won't say where, but there was a, there was a bench in town for the longest time and it was, it had a sign that said no loitering on it. And I just found that to be like an irony of like, please come in, but it's a gated, you know, in this case, it's a gated facility. So I don't, I mean, when it comes to us thinking about that, I think that we should still think about other area, in, in that, that area. Um, and if, well, if this one is able to be closed, I, I think that it, it lends itself to the idea of why can't other ones be closed for humans? Um, uh, but I, uh, the other question I had had was, um, Jackie had asked about what the, um, public safety concern was, but.
Any, anything else? Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll just, my two cents. I mean, sometimes I walk out here in this parking lot after some heated meetings and I'm, I'm concerned um, for my, my safety and I know it's not just the criminal justice system. Um, you know, the, the folks who park there are interacting with all sorts of matters that get, you know, can get heated parties involved. Uh, so I don't think there's any question about that and you, you know, Chief, you remember normalization of deviance. You don't wanna keep, keep having potential misses and you, and you're not taking care of, uh, taking care of business and, and safety issues. So, um, it's important that, that this, this is taken care of. I was actually surprised it took this long because the initial conversation I had was probably two, two, two years ago at least. So it's, it's, I know it's been, been some work on, on your end to try to, try to pull this all together. Um, but it's, but it's, it's important that it's done. Yeah, to the extent that we can make sure it's accessible to pedestrians on off hours, I think that's, that's important. Um, I prefer to have pedestrian access because we're trying to make it convenient, um, all hours of the day, but I, I can understand, you know, the concern that, that people can walk, walk through there. Um, when, when folks who might be vulnerable to, to, uh, you know, ill-meaning, um, actors, um, may, may, maybe leaving or entering the building. So, um, I'm, I'm okay with, with both, both the, uh, vehicular and pedestrian access, uh, being, being shut off during, during county, county hours. Um, you know, typical county business hours. Um, is there anything, anything else beyond that? Yeah. I don't, I'm not sure that that helped you at all because I think you got some conflicting, conflicting opinions, but.
No, it actually did. Yeah, thanks for your input. You, we can take that back to, to our folks and then, and we can have, uh, potentially our, our council speak with, with your folks to figure out how to, how to move this along. But just on a side note, I do wanna compliment your staff, uh, you know, Mark and, and Jeff were excellent to work through this, this process, gave us great feedback, directional where we're, we're headed. Uh, you don't get that with every municipality. So I know you probably know that and you're fortunate to have great staff, but it's always a pleasure for us from the county to work with municipalities that have great staff that are willing to help us solve problems and not throw up roadblocks. So thank you for that.
Well, I hope you appreciated the hour that you had to sit and listen to our planning meetings.
That's, that's right up your alley though, right? Pun intended.
Yeah, right.
You don't have anything further from public works? Sure. Yeah, there's, there's no, uh, new business. Is there any, uh, further public comment this evening? Go ahead.
I'm Hannah Kobe, twenty-eight East Pomfret Street. I'd like to comment on, um, the business that was just presented. Um, so coming from East Pomfret Street, I work also like Father Adam at one A North Hanover, so that's my commute. Um, and I would just, uh, ask that you consider keeping pedestrian access if possible twenty-four seven. Um, but certainly after hours, um, because as a pedestrian, I feel more safe walking as directly as I can. Um, and as an organist, I'm practicing at odd hours of the day. So I'm often walking back and forth after dark. Um, and for me, that feels safer than walking in front of the courthouse, uh, where there's also the bus stop. There are more people loitering and more, um, potential just time-wise for me to be out on the street alone. So I'd ask you to consider that, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead, Joe.
Coming back to my favorite block, I learned
Coming back to my favorite block, I learned something tonight that I hadn't registered earlier. And if that block on Bedford between Penn and McBride is the narrowest point and we've lost our buffers. That's all the more reason why that bike lane has to be protected behind the parked cars. And just one comment, um, someone said, well, there aren't that many cyclists. And I know that we're all trying to make Carlisle better for future generations. And I just wanna point out, and if you need journal studies that are peer-reviewed, I can get them for you. That young people coming up, they know that bicycles are cheaper, even if they're electric. They're healthier, it's lifestyle exercise, and they're better for the earth, so the number of people cycling in younger generations coming up. Is only getting bigger all, all over the country, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and it's, and it's important to note too that, uh, you know, you don't see cyclists where cyclists don't feel safe cycling, right? So, that's the, that's the real, real point, we're trying to make this all safer for everyone. Um, any other public comment? And Steph, we don't have anybody, anybody online? Okay, thank you, this meeting is adjourned.